Everyone, I'd like to, we're gonna have all of our meetings tonight, but to start off today, I would like everyone to take a moment of silence. We lost one of our long-term serving firemen here in the town of Shererville. George Michaels passed away this week. George had been with the town for thirty, served thirty years, was a fire chief back, back years ago, and at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember George Michaels. Thank you. In the February meetings, we have an extra meeting that will start. We have our Finance Committee. It's a yearly meeting that we have to go through for the month of February. So I will turn that over to the President of the Finance Committee, Rob Getzloff.
I'd like to call the Board of Finance Committee to order for Wednesday, February fourteenth, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
President.
Councilwoman Robin Arvinitas.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara. Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson. Lease Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Annie Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the election of officers. The first position is for President.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Rob Getzloff to be the President of the Board of Finance.
I'll second that.
There was a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Secretary?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate our Clerk Treasurer, Mike Troxel, for Secretary of the Finance Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
The approval of the minutes of February eighth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. There is no new business?
Mr. President, there is some new business.
Oh, there is new business. This falls under new business and the next two.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was under.
No, you're all good.
Under new business, the Clerk Treasurer will report on investments and then report on the debt service.
Before that, I want to mention here that we have some voided checks that we need to review, and they are voided checks that are two years plus or older, and these are checks from 2021 that have been not presented for payment yet. And under any kind of code five dash eleven dash ten dash point five, we're required to take action on these items. If approved tonight, these checks will be added back to respective accounts that they were issued from. The total checks be voided is seventeen thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and sixteen cents, sixty-six cents, excuse me. So we just need action from the board here regarding authorizing to void these checks and add them back to the accounts that they came from.
So moved.
So have nothing cashed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is page two of your item there is, it's a summary of property taxes, excise, and sevit collections for 2023. And as you see, our property tax collections, we did collect over a hundred percent of our collections than what we were told that we could. So it was one hundred and one percent point eight eight. In our excise tax collections, we were at ninety-eight point three nine percent. In our commercial vehicle tax collections, we were a hundred and two point five three percent of our collections for 2023, and we also collected four million, five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents in our redevelopment for 2023. Next item, page three. This is interest earned for 2023. I have on that list from 2019 through 2023, and as you see, in 2023, we had an excellent year in our interest earned. We had some great partners to invest our monies with this past year, and I'm happy to report that we collected two million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. If you see, compared to 2022, we were just shy of five hundred thousand, and obviously in '21, we only had eighty-seven thousand. So we took advantage of the interest rates that did creep up there in 2023. We got some good rates with some of our financial partners in the community here, and we're very happy to report that number there for that.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Any questions from the board?
Okay, continuing on, Mr. President.
Okay.
Page four is a debt statement, and page four we have is the principal and interest paid on long-term debt service was four million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred five dollars and thirty cents for 2023. On page five, right after that, is a similar debt service for leases, which we paid eight hundred eighty-seven dollars, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. The total servicing of debt for 2023, we paid out five million, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and twenty-three cents. There's one other note. Total outstanding debt for both long-term and leases for 2023 was twenty-five million, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. The, we did add some new debt that we started paying on in January of 2024. We added two point two million dollars of debt in a vehicle and equipment lease, so that will be added on for the 2024 report. But we did do that last year, but we didn't make a payment until 2024. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We will move on into the Water Work Board meeting. We will keep the roll call the same as the Finance Committee. Minutes of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Claims? Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Any reports from staff?
No reports, Mr. President.
Any reports from Water Board members?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
There is no old business, no new business? Is there any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll now move into redevelopment.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, February fourteenth, 2024. The time is seven oh nine PM. The Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire town council. Minutes of the January seventeenth public meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Claims? Any additional claims? Mr. Troxel?
No.
Okay. No additional claims?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
No reports, Mr. President.
Council members?
None.
Okay. We have no old business or new business, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, February fourteenth, 2024, at seven ten PM. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting. First on the agenda would be the minutes of the January seventeenth, 2024 public meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Mr. Troxel, do we have any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So move on, claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Any council member reports regarding utility? Moving on, we have no old business. We do have new business. Item A, consider the refund of overpayment on utility invoice in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Madam President, thank you. I'll take this. Yeah, this was brought to our attention. One of our customers gave us a call a few weeks ago and let us know that he had made an overpayment, overpayments on his utility bill for quite some time, and asked if we could get his money that he overpaid back to him. So I did have a conversation with him yesterday, and he did do it on purpose to put money in there in anticipation of any type of loss of job or anything he may have. He'll have some money there to pay his bills. So this five thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents is his current balance. This will bring his balance down to zero, and he will make his payments as they are invoiced him for the proper amount, so.
Thank you.
Madam President, motion to approve refund of overpayment on utility invoice, five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board meeting? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for February fourteenth at approximately seven ten PM. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day, and second of all, the next is the roll call. The roll call stays the same as Utility Board. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the January seventeenth public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims? Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is reports. I'll start to my left here. Robbie Hanson from IT, anything? Our Fire Chief Bob Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to report that for the month of January, the Fire Department responded to 283 EMS calls, seventy-seven fire calls, for a total of 360 calls for the month of January.
Thank you, Chief. Assistant Chief Dave Meyer?
Nothing to report, sir.
Police Chief Pete Sormas?
Nothing to report tonight.
Deputy Chief Steve McAmire?
Nothing to report.
Park Superintendent John Novosich?
Thank you. We have our annual health fair coming up Thursday, the twenty-second, at the Community Center from three to six PM, and that is open to the public, and it's free. We have about forty health vendors that will be there.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Our Town Engineer Neil Simstad?
No reports, Mr. President.
Public Works?
Nothing to report.
Operation, Director of Operations Annie?
No reports.
Town Manager Jim Gorman?
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take public comments regarding agenda items. I do know there's a member in the audience that has an item that they would like to speak about to us, and if you wanted to do that now, we'll allow that. Want to step up? Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Alexis Wondrostro. I am a Northwest Indiana resident. I am an educator, and most importantly, I'm the mother of a disabled child named Noah. Noah is six years old. He's nonverbal and has profound autism. My son makes up a small percent of a wide range of disabled people in the state of Indiana who are struggling to find a safe place in our community. I stand before you to discuss a matter close to the heart of our community, the importance of inclusion. In a world that evolves rapidly, it's essential to ensure that no one is left behind, especially our fellow citizens who are disabled, who may not speak for themselves. I would like the council and the audience to think about their childhood for a little bit. What did you like to do? Did you like to swim, play baseball, play sports? Or maybe you guys were more like me and enjoyed music or even art? I was in several activities growing up. I loved being on stage and performing. I had easy access to this type of activity, and most of us in the room probably had the same. However, for disabled individuals like my son Noah and many others like him, they don't have the option. A whole group of individuals don't have the same luxury of finding activities they enjoy just like we did. Yes, I know our town has been trying to include us in events with the CSRI, but it's not working for most of us. We don't always feel welcomed in spaces in our community, and I know the town of Shererville has been asking the community what to do with the unoccupied space at the old Iliana racetrack. Our neighborhood has enough stores, it has enough restaurants, and it has enough car dealerships. It's our, it's time our community gives back to those who have been ignored. In the unoccupied space at Iliana Speedway, I think it would be great to have a center for disabled individuals that allow them to be who they are truly. I envision a place where they can take art classes, music classes, and even participate in sports teams because they can. Participants can be part of these things in a place where they are accepted and surrounded by people like them and people who know how to work with them, and this does wonders to their development. We live in the Midwest where our winters are not very kind. My family struggles to find places to take my son because there are no places for him. By opening a center specifically designed for individuals with special needs, we take a significant step toward creating a more inclusive society where everyone has equal opportunities to engage in recreational activities. The establishment of a space designed for special individuals is not merely a project, it's a profound statement of our community values emphasizing inclusivity, understanding, and support. By dedicating resources to create this inclusive space, we affirm that everyone deserves to find happiness. I urge the council to lead with empathy and vision by making this project a reality, including those who can make this project a success. Let's make inclusivity our legacy. Sincerely, Noah's Voice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as you know, we have, you know, decided, we are starting to work on the Iliana project, and the majority of that will be recreation, so we definitely will take your comments to heart and work with our park superintendent on programs and stuff to.
I have been emailing with the public, with the Parks Department. I've been emailing them since last week. I've been in contact with them. I know you guys have developed the CSRI. I've just been giving input on how to make that more inclusive. A lot of our parents work, a lot of it is some things that really aren't designed for our children, and we appreciate that you guys are trying to reach that out, but we really need families to be involved with their voices to tell you how you guys can help us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comments regarding agenda items? Any public comments regarding agenda items? No public comments, we'll move right into old business. Our first item is.
Tom, Mr. President, I did have a report. You didn't ask if the council had any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
Sorry to jump in. So I wanted to report that at the December meeting this past year, December 2023, the town council had appointed some board members, and one in particular, the Safety Board member, was objected to by myself and Mr. Conley. He was appointed as a Republican appointee. He was not a Republican and has officially resigned from that appointment now. So at this time, I would make a motion to replace and appoint a true Republican, Anthony Ferraro, who is in the audience here today, to take that position on the Safety Board for 2024 through 2027.
I'll second that.
And my comment on that is, the gentleman that was appointed was, was a Republican, and because it had to be a party appointment, the state changed the law back in June of, July of last year, where he had to vote for two consecutive years in a row as a Republican. We found out that that wasn't the case. We followed the attorney's advice, and that resident resigned. That gentleman also has a chance to vote back in in May, which would be early voting would be in April. So my recommendation is, is to leave that vacant for just two months until he can vote for his second primary in a row.
I don't think we should leave that seat vacant for any time at all. The fact of the matter is, he was not a valid Republican, and that was proven, and that's why he resigned. You know, so Caleb and I, this is a Republican appointment. It should be our choice. Mr. Ferraro is a true Republican, a valid Republican by state statute. This should be our appointment, and this is our motion and our second.
We have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Mr. Troxel, you take roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinitas?
No.
Mr. Getzloff?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No. That appointment will be addressed at a later meeting. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from the council? Any reports? No other reports, we'll move right into old business. Item A is ordinance 1999, in ordinance annexing certain contiguous land to the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, repealing town annexation ordinance number 1978 and all matters related thereto. This is second reading. The petitioner is Brian Lance. The location is twelve zero ten West Eighty-Fifth Avenue and ten three hundred West Eighty-Fifth Avenue, part of one oh three oh four West Eighty-Fifth Avenue. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first reading of this ordinance was completed in December of last year. The public hearing that was held was in January of this year, and this is the last part of this annexation process, so we're looking for approval and adoption tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do you need to talk?
I was just going to make the record. It's an adaptive reading, only one reading. The agenda doesn't seem to reflect that. It says approve and adopt.
So just approve, okay.
Motion to adopt ordinance 1999.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second to adopt. We'll move right into the adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There are now publication, notice of publications to be done. We'll do those immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. We'll move right into new business. First item's item A is Resolution 2024 dash two, a resolution to transfer funds within a category of appropriations. Is that, Mr. Troxel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, yes. When we were going through our end-of-year closeout, we identified that there was a couple transfers that needed to be corrected in order to close out the year. One was a large one for two hundred thousand dollars. That action was taken on by the council to put two hundred thousand dollars into a rainy day fund. We needed to have a resolution that evening, which we did not. So this takes care of that, and then there was a small three cent errors that we needed to correct then for 2023 for that. So that's the reason for the transfer.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is award bid for the road materials. Our Public Works Director, Chad Nandorf, can you give us a report on that?
Yes, on February ninth, the bid packages were opened up here at Town Hall for the 2024 road material packages. There was only one bid for the asphalt paving and material service contract, and that was by Reith Riley Company. The poured-in-place concrete portion of the contract, there was three bids, and the most responsible bidder for this work was H3 Concrete Construction Company. The road materials concerning stone, gravel, black dirt, and sand for Public Works, there was two bids for that. Walters Excavator, Excavation Company was the lowest and most responsible for that portion, and our concrete disposal service services, so this is concrete we pull and need to get rid of and get crushed. No, nobody bid on that, so I will be calling companies that own crushers to give us pricing for that for this upcoming year.
And I guess my question is, do you and Mr. Hanson, Director of Operations, do you approve all of those bids?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, motion to approve asphalt paving and material services, award to Reith Riley Construction Company. Do I take these in or all at once?
Either way, as long as it's clear.
All right, and then the second award would be poured-in-place concrete materials and services to H3 Concrete Construction Company, and the third award would go to road materials, stone, gravel, black dirt, and sand to Walters Excavation.
And I'll second that.
Based on recommendation. Based upon the recommendation from Public Works. Thank you.
Second.
Motion, we have a second on the recommendation from our Public Works Director for all of the material bids. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries zero. Thank you. Item C is award bid for the garbage service. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a bid opening last week for garbage service. We only received one bid, and it was from Republic Services for garbage and recycling pickup. This is only accepting their bid, and we will award the contract at the next town council meeting in March by ordinance.
And that is the company that does our service now?
Correct, sir.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item D is consider acceptance of change order number one for Milestone Contractors North Incorporated for the Community Crossing Match Grant 2023 dash one. It's a twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cent decrease. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the change order is a decrease, as you mentioned, and it was for quantities that we didn't end up needing to complete the project.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item E is consider approval of pay request number one from Milestone Contractors North Incorporated for the Community Crossing Match Grant of twenty twenty-three dash one of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is the one and only pay request that we received from Milestone for twenty twenty-three dash one C C M G project. Um, this was done last year, the contractor requested that if they had time, they were a little slow, so they could do all the work, and then we wouldn't have to pay them till twenty twenty-four, so that's what we decided to do, so that's what's in front of you tonight for, uh, approval of payment. Thank you.
And Mr. Gorman, is, is all the, all the jobs done?
Yes, they are.
Motion to approve pay request one from Milestone North for Community Crossing Mashing Grant twenty twenty-three dash one in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is consider acceptance of donations. Uh, Mr. Troxel, do you have that list handy to read?
I do, thank you, Mr. President. We received a total for the month of January of six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. It's broken down as follows, to the Animal Control Fund, we received a hundred and forty-five dollars, broken down by thirty-five dollars from David Fleming, Tina Robinson, fifty dollars, Karen DeBardlow, forty, and Bakken, twenty, for a total of a hundred and forty-five dollars. To the Canine Fund, Van Gogh Incorporated donated four hundred dollars, Absolute Construction, twenty-five hundred, and Linda Wedstrand, two hundred dollars for a total of thirty-one hundred dollars to the Canine Fund. To the Police Equipment Fund, Linda Wedstat donated two hundred dollars. The Fire Department, Fire Department total, well, there's in-kind here, so we have from Eldon and Mary Ann Lehane, thirteen boxes of Frito-Lay, forty-count box, one-ounce snack packs at twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents a box. That in-kind donation totaled two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighteen cents. To the Fire Equipment Fund, Town and Country Homemakers Club donated fifty dollars. And to the Public Works Department, they received from Shererville's Loles, two pallets of asphalt crack sealer, forty-five, fifty-pound boxes at sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents a box, for a total of in-kind donations of two thousand, nine hundred, six hundred and ten cents. As a recap, we received a total of in-kind donations of three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, monetary donations, three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, for again, a grand total of six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, open the business floor, any comments from the floor?
Anthony Ferraro, fourteen twenty-nine, St. Andrews. Uh, my comments will be addressed directly to Mrs. Arvinitis, Mr. Schmidt, and Mr. Getzloff. When I applied for the Safety Board appointment, it was based on my years of experience in supporting law enforcement all over Northwest Indiana. I've had the privilege of working with both of the gentlemen to my right, along with many of our officers and public safety employees. We have delivered on P S A D training, physical security assessment training from federal law enforcement, Georgia and Washington. That training is specifically designed to keep our places of worship and our children in our schools safe. We delivered A T F training, we've coordinated with a myriad of industry, of agencies, both federal, state, and county, the Indiana Department of Education, Director Balco, in our schools throughout our community. All of these things I have done, all of these things is what I wanted to do if allowed, to keep our community safe, the community I and everyone here lives in, that our children live in. And yet, this evening, for some reason, we've decided to double down on the political chicanery that went on in the December meeting. And you three have decided that you would rather keep a public safety board empty than to avail the community of that acumen, contacts, and available training that can come to work here on day one. Do you have such little regard for the citizens of this community, of which I am one, and our children, of which I have two? Do you have such little regard for the public safety employees to my right and the rest in their departments, that you would choose to leave a board appointment empty? Public safety is the foundation upon which any community rests. Today, you've decided that's not important. What's important is politics? The board appointment you seem so set on happens to be the husband of a primary challenger to Caleb Johnson? Coincidence? This is disgusting Cook County politics, and I expect better out of public servants and elected leaders. I would highly encourage you to reconsider your decision this evening and next month's meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor?
Good evening, my name is Kevin Dean, nineteen oh five, Sir Richard Road in Shererville.
I'm so, I'm sorry, what address, sir?
One nine zero five, Sir Richard Road. Uh, this issue with the safety position, I'm new to Shererville, I've been here for less than two years, I have not voted in two primaries. There was an open position for the Republican, uh, vote coming up, and I tried, went, enlisted to get on the ballot. I was informed that I was not allowed to be on the ballot because I had not voted in two primaries. There is a way around this situation, and that is to have the chairman, I believe, of the Lake County Republican Party sign off on it. He did so for me, so I am now able to be on the Republican ticket. Have you gentlemen asked, and lady, asked if the Republicans are willing to sign off on that, so this man can be on the tick, on your appointment immediately, and if not, then are you circumventing the situation? Because as it's been stated earlier, it sounds like you have a very qualified candidate already available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? This meeting is adjourned, have a good evening.